Call us back to order. We appreciate everyone being here tonight. In our previous public hearing, we've had our invocation and pledge. And so this time, I'll call us back to order for our regular scheduled meeting. And at this time, we'll ask the clerk to call the roll for a quorum again.
Commissioner Blake Moore.
Present.
Commissioner Askew.
Here.
Chairman Letfield.
Present.
Commissioner Hart.
Here.
Commissioner Stoltz.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. We do have the agenda that was posted last week on our website and Facebook page. The agenda is prepared today. Do we have any modifications to our agenda at this time? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Motion to approve the agenda.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Stoltz. Any further discussion of the board on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. The approval of our minutes from our regular scheduled meeting held back on August the 11th, 2022, here at this facility at 7:00. The clerk has worked to prepare these minutes. Is there any modifications or changes or corrections to those minutes from the board?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Blake Moore to approve the minutes. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner Askew. Any further discussion of the board? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the minutes are approved as presented by the clerk. Okay, at this time, we do have a ceremonial bravery award. At this time, we'll turn the program over to Chief Blake Hodges.
Good evening, thank you. I'd like to ask Deputy Fire Chief Nathan Farrow to step forward. Also Sergeant Michael Keith and firefighter Drew Andrews from Walker County Fire Rescue. And Sergeant Christina Hicks and Communication Officer Alyssa Landris. If y'all would come forward, please. These two ladies are with our Walker County 911 Communications Center. We're here this evening to present Sergeant Keith and firefighter Andrews with a life-saving commendation and the Medal of Bravery. And to present Sergeant Hicks and Communication Officer Landris with life-saving commendations. To receive the Medal of Bravery, the firefighter must be a member of the department who, in the performance of duty while on a call, performs an act of distinguished bravery and stamina in adverse conditions of fire, environment, weather, or materials. On July 4th, 2022, at 0619, Walker County 911 Communication Center dispatched the City of Rossville Fire Department and Walker County Fire Rescue Station 7 via automatic aid to 107 Shear Drive for reported residential structure fire. Shortly after units were dispatched, Walker County 911 updated all responding units, advising there were two occupants still inside the residence with heavy fire reported. Engine 7 arrived on scene and was assigned to search the residence by Rossville Engine 1, who was first to arrive on scene. With heavy fire and smoke conditions present, Engine 7's crew made a rapid decision to utilize the deliberate tactic of vent inner search. Sergeant Keith and firefighter Andrews entered the structure through a bedroom window previously identified by a Rossville police officer to be the last known location of one of the occupants. Upon entering the structure, the firefighters found an unresponsive victim in the bedroom floor. Without hesitation, Sergeant Keith and firefighter Andrews worked together to rapidly extricate the victim through the window in which they had entered. With the help of Rossville police officers, the victim was transferred to the on-scene EMS crew. With no other firefighters available, Sergeant Keith and firefighter Andrews continued with search efforts. The two firefighters entered the structure for a second time through an additional bedroom window. A few seconds after entering the structure, they located a second victim. Sergeant Keith and firefighter Andrews again rapidly extricated the second victim with assistance from Rossville police officers. Upon extrication, the second victim was transferred to EMS. It can be said with reasonable certainty, one occupant is alive today because of your actions. As such, I present to you this life-saving commendation and award you the Medal of Bravery Communication Officer Alyssa Landris dispatched the call, remained professional and calm. And there's a lot goes into these calls. It lasts a long time. She kept composure, did an outstanding job communicating all the efforts from the 911 Center to all the first responders. Sergeant Hicks took the call from one of the occupants that ended up being one of the victims, stayed on the line with her the entire time, even when the victim went unresponsive. An amazing job. Thank you guys for what you do. You guys are getting recognized with commendations today. This commendation is ordered for your swift actions and outstanding dedication to duty in the team effort displayed on July 4th, 2022. Your efforts were the direct result in quick emergency response and rescue of an individual who was found to be in distress and unable to remove herself from a dangerous situation. Never forget the difference you make every day. This incident did not go without tragedy as one of the victims did not survive. But I am very glad today to have one of the victims here. Ms. Jeannie Mullins is here with us. You're okay. Ms. Mullins, our thoughts and prayers are continuously with you with your loss, but we are so glad you're here. We've all heard the praise that takes a village or a lot of teamwork. There's several people that I need to thank, and then I'll close. The greatest support system for any of our employees, firefighters, dispatchers, is their family. So those of you that are here, those that are home that couldn't be here, we thank you guys for supporting and allowing us to utilize your loved one every day. As you can see around the room, Walker County Fire Rescue, this is tough for me, supports that we're one big family. And we support each other through everything. It's much deeper than you guys realize. We're recognizing heroes today, but all these individuals are my heroes. I'm surrounded by, this leadership team within the fire service is unbelievable. These individuals arrive where they are because of all the leaders in this room, both volunteer and career. Our training is second to none. We set the bar extremely high, and I never hear any complaints, just a lot of effort. And as such, it pays off in times like this. Our dedication to physical fitness and day-to-day training rivals none. And I mean, it, I don't say it enough, I really appreciate the day-in, day-out dedication that all of you individuals give for this county and this fire department. I want to thank Rossville Police Department Sergeant Sean Carter, who was off-duty that day. Officer Chase Gallion, Officer Marcus Alford, who arrived first on the scene and got out of his patrol car with tools in hand, ready to go to work. They did an amazing job on that incident, helping our firefighters extricate these victims from the exterior of the home. Rossville Fire Department, Memorial EMS, Walker County Sheriff's Department was there. But lastly, and certainly not least, I want to thank this Board of Commissioners. Just over one year ago, July 1st, 2021, in coordination with the City of Rossville, you approved the automatic aid agreement. So without your continued support, and the city of Rossville's for coming together and believing in what we tell you and listening to us, this very likely would have had a different outcome. I want to thank everybody for being here tonight. You guys are great. Thank you for everything you do. Thank you guys for everything. I appreciate the board.
I'd like to say I'm a happy boarder, we very much. Very appreciative of all you firefighters, first responders, our 911 Center. You're all on the front lines, and you sacrifice much for all of us here in this county. We're very grateful of that. I appreciate Chief Hodges' comments about the automatic aid agreements. He and I have had a long time to go together to have an automatic aid agreement with all of our cities and our surrounding partners in our area. There's still work there to be done, but automatic aid agreements save lives, as you well know. Because when you have a structure fire, you've got automatic dispatch, there's no hesitation, there's no waiting on that second alarm or call for assistance or mutual aid. It's automatic, it happens. So thank you for being willing to be a part of that, and thank you for all that you do. And we'll take recess here for about five minutes. I know there's some that may want to transition out, but thank you again for all your efforts. And the guys and women that have done the outstanding service, thank you for what you do. And we'll take a recess for about five minutes. Okay, we're gonna reconvene our meeting here tonight, and appreciate everyone that stuck with us here. But I know there's some of these folks had to get home, and some of them been up all night, too. So we appreciate them, our first responders. So at this time, we will have a public hearing on our proposed FY 2023 general fund budget and our proposed FY 2023 enterprise funds and special revenue budget for the Walker County government. This budget can be found in its full version and also in a summary version on our website. You can go to the Government tab and go to Budget and Finance and find this information. It is in a PDF format, and you can save it, download it, print it. And also, it shows comparisons from prior years, back for the last several years' budget. The proposed budget that's being presented for the general fund is $31,537,788. That is an increase of $2,194,362 of an increase in the general fund budget. Eighty-eight percent of that increase is to cover additional personnel costs, increased costs in personnel. And also to be in that number is a proposal to give our employees an additional 80 cents per hour additional income. It's mentioned, this is a budget proposal of almost $2.2 million increase. And to fund that, that's where we were looking for about $678,000 of that funding to come from the property taxes in order to meet these budget obligations. So we do have some increased revenue in our sales tax and our insurance rebates and some other smaller line items that add up very quickly to cover that $2.2 million increase. And so only proposed $678,000 of that increase would come from the property taxes, which will be voted on next Thursday night. So at this time, is there anyone in the room that has any questions or comments about the budget and would like to come up and address the board at the podium? We'd like for you to come up one at a time and state your name for the record. Anyone have any public comments? Okay. See, yes, sir, would you like to speak?
Yes.
Yes, please, if you'll come up and state your name, and we'll give you five minutes.
My name's Andrew Underwood. I live in Rock Spring. I just have a quick question. You did mention increases to property taxes. About, what, about how much are we looking at then in terms of that?
Yeah, in our packet, there should be some extra ones back there in the bag, and I'd like for you to take a copy, so you can have this with you, but the-
I think I must have overlooked that then in the packet.
That's no problem, but the average increase between unincorporated and incorporated, because they're different rates, would be a 4.81% increase. And so when we look at that over the six-year history, you know, total increase our government is depending on property taxes, a total of $803,000 over a total of six years, which is about five and three-quarters of a percent increase over a six-year period. So that's why the state has everyone do a five-year digest, plus the current year gives you a six-year look. So kind of think of it like an investment. You don't want to look at just one year's retirement, because it could be higher or low. Look at the averages, look at the trends. And so it is more this year than normal, but we're in an inflationary year of about 9%, which I know everyone is dealing with. But this is also trying to keep us competitive with our staffing. We have been losing employees due to competition, and you know, we need to be able to provide these services. And one of the areas that we unfortunately have lost personnel over the last couple of years due to wages is some of our first responders that was represented here tonight. Some of their coworkers have left, and most of them, the resignation letters I've read, they really didn't want to leave because they have a family here. But it comes down just to the sheer economics of other opportunities they had for their families, so.
Okay. I'm just looking for, trying to figure out how this is going to affect.
Yes, that's a good question.
There was an example in the ad about your house, so if you had a $175,000 house in an unincorporated area, it was $31 a year or more.
Okay.
I don't know how much your, I mean, it got another value for 225, it was $34 a year.
Okay. Thank you.
So roughly $3 a month.
That, Todd, that gives me a much better idea of what you're talking about. Thank you.
If you figure it out per month, it's about $3 a month.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hart. That's good tips there, Evan. Anyone else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move forward with our agenda. At this time, we do allow for public comments on any topic. Our last two public hearings tonight have been specific on those two topics, but at this time, if anybody would like to speak on any topic, we'd give you as well as five minutes and just ask you to come to the podium and speak your name. So is anyone that would like to speak on any topic? I saw your hand first. Melvin, come on up.
Hey, good afternoon. My name's Melvin Moody. I'm here to have a follow-up regarding East Warm Road, which I know we've discussed. So Shannon, I had a couple of questions for you, and then there's a couple of individuals, I don't know if they want to talk or not, but on June 23rd, we had a follow-up here with the board, which, you know, you advised that you needed more time to kind of go through a resolution that would hopefully satisfy all the homeowners that live on the road. And then on the, you know, 28th of July, you're kind enough to, you, David, Brian, most all the homeowners met with you at your office. And we, in that meeting, we kind of discussed some different options as far as like how to move forward. One of those options was, hey, if we could provide documentations of the right-of-way easement, potentially grading, graveling, keeping the trees cut back, which is what the residents really were kind of looking for. Two was potentially possibly purchasing property and kind of come around the road that was causing the issue. And the third one was kind of far-fetched, but it was coming around off Lake Howard, which attached to an easement that I own, that's kind of goes around, but that was, again, kind of far-fetched. You guys had, or Brian and David, y'all asked to provide some additional documentation regarding the right-of-way easement. We were able to research that and provide that. And then on the 10th, August 10th, we had another, you had scheduled a meeting for kind of a follow-up with everybody. I understand some things happened, you weren't able to attend, but did have a question. I guess, you know, first would be kind of where does the county, you know, stand on it? Because we're still having issues, and we did, you know, provide all the documentation for it, but coming out of that meeting specifically, the homeowners still felt like, hey, and I'm shortening it up, but hey, thank you for the documentation, but our stance is it's still a private road. And that was kind of the feel after leaving, so just kind of wanted to ask that question about it.
Yeah, we are still working to schedule a follow-up meeting with the other two homeowners that was mentioned. That's a work in progress. I do understand that they have a scheduled date for an actual survey, which will be helpful for everyone to have that survey information. I know you've had, I think, some additional communication with the county attorney as well, and so appreciate you providing those documents. So I know this is probably felt like a real slow process, but there has been a lot of hours of time from county staff and elected officials that have put into this situation. And it's, there's still not a resolution, I understand, but we are still moving forward and still honoring the commitments from y'all's last meeting that y'all discussed. Unfortunately, I was not able to be there due to a family emergency, but I know Commissioner Hart was there and the county attorney was there as well as scheduled, and Sheriff Wilson and Captain Anderson was there from the sheriff's office all, so, you know, we had good representation there.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, just transparently, kind of felt like we were back to square one. I know I told Brian, I know Brian probably came out of there and could tell I wasn't happy about it, but, you know, I don't think anybody was. And just because it felt like it went backwards, and we felt like we had, you know, some communication that, hey, you know, based on the documentation and research, we could have a good chance to move forward. I know Brian, my next question really was for you, because I know, you know, you've been grateful to, you know, have a lot of these conversations, you know, with me directly. And I've been kind of the mediator between, you know, the rest of the residents, just trying to keep them in communication. But, you know, one of the things that you and I discussed that if we were able to provide this right-of-way easement documents, which we did, went back and researched all the deeds and provided the records, was that you all were in agreeance that, hey, if we had that, we could, you know, feel like you had a good chance of moving forward and potentially graveling, maintaining the road.
Yeah, we did talk about that, and we talked with the commissioner about that. But in talking with our attorney, we have to have an agreement of everybody that borders that before we can legally do that. Is that correct, David?
Correct.
Okay. And I know we talked about that at the last meeting we had. Did you, did you guys, did you provide it to Melvin? Does he have that?
Yes, he asked for some specific support in my position, and I provided that to him.
Okay. So where are we right now? Right now, when we meet with the, with the, with the other property owners, I would say, we should have, we should be able to sit down with them and tell them legally, the residents of East Warm Road can drive up and down that road because they have a permanent easement, was that the right word? A permanent easement that was given to them and legally given to them. So you guys have that. And once we have that meeting, if there is obstruction is put in the road, the sheriff can come out and deal with it. Law enforcement can. So that's where we are right now. In the future, if everybody, according to county attorney, if everybody on the road, everybody has property that touches that road agrees to making it a county road, I'm not saying we're going to, but then at that time, we can look at it and say, okay, can we make it a county road with these stipulations? Gravel once a year, twice a year, cut the limbs back, something like that. That, I think we've all talked about that. But before we can get that, according to our attorney, who we rely on, everybody on that road has to agree to that.
Gotcha. Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Yep, so, I mean, the issue with that is the homeowner that's at the front would never sign off on that. And that's why we're stuck.
Well, I'm looking forward to the meeting with him. Which- Who's that scheduled for, Rob?
Shannon, we don't have the date yet, but that's a meeting that we're gonna have jointly with Captain Anderson, Steve, and David, and Brian and myself.
And I think his survey has been done September, the first week of September, is that right? Somebody told me that. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think it is the first.
Are we waiting until the survey is done before?
Oh, no, no.
We're not?
No.
Okay.
But that is moving forward, we understand.
Okay.
Okay.
So hopefully, we can have that meeting with them next week, probably? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Melvin.
Anyone else that, oh, yes, we had, yes, I'm sorry. Mr. Pope, you're next. Please state your name, sir.
Jim Pope. Robert Stoltz.
Yes, sir.
Few meetings ago, when we had the attorney from Cummins, Gerard, you seemed to be in the group that was strongly considering replacing Shannon, the chairperson, with administrative duties. Now-
And what made you say that, Mr. Pope?
Because you spoke up, and also, I think you're the one that signed to retain him as a lawyer. That's all, I said it seems to me like.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, in the military, civilian government, private industry, it's a common practice that if somebody's fallen short on their work duties, they, of course, have oral communications. And then kind of as a last resort or more serious way of dealing with it, they have documentation saying, hey, your work performance is coming up short. Now, my question to you is, do you have any documentation that you have given Shannon saying, hey, your work is coming up short, or I have a suggestion, or something along that lines? Do you have any of that?
Well, let me say this, okay? Do you want your government, your county government, to be efficient?
Absolutely.
Do you want your county government to be productive?
Absolutely.
Okay. So having said that, when we had an informational session with Ken Gerard, that was done because as a board, all of us, all five of us, want a productive and hard-working county government. We merely had an informational session to look at options, how we can increase our productivity, how we can improve our efficiency.
Okay, but the, but the question is, have you given him any documentation to say that, hey, we need to improve in this?
No, sir, no written documentation. Shannon and I have had some very good discussions, even after the meeting.
Okay, that's, that's oral, oral communication. Robert Blake Moore, Blake Moore, do you have any documentation, that you have such documentation?
I don't have any documentation, but Mr. Chairman, have we had conversations here about this?
Well, we talk often, I talk often to all the board.
As I said, yes, oral communication is very important, but if it is a serious problem of taking Walker County's money, going all the way to Cummins to get an attorney, and you're running up some pretty big bills. Some people, well, tonight was talking about the mileage rate. Certainly, we want it to be productive, we want the mileage rate to be as low, but we don't want any waste in there that's causing the mileage rate to go up. Mark Askew, do you have any documentation that you have given to the commissioner?
Well, I don't know, I do believe there is documentation, and what I would claim to be the documentation would be the times that things have been discussed, either in open meeting or in the minutes of executive session, there should be documentation in the minutes about specifics that have been discussed, where of course, that's, you know, that's documented by the, actually, our attorney takes the minutes. So do I have in my hand, or have I handed any specific documentation to the chairman? No, I haven't. But it is documented in meetings that- But, but it is documented in meetings, there has been documentation or should be documentation where specifics have been discussed.
Okay, I understand that, but no, no special documentation going directly to... Brian Hart, do you have any documentation, such documentation?
I don't know. Shannon and I talk probably two or three times a week. No documentation, no sir.
Okay. My time is just about up. I'll, I'll see y'all. Hey, I won't be here at next meeting, but I'll see you somewhere down the road.
Take care yourself and hope you get better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, seeing no one, we'll move forward in our meeting. That ends our public comment. We'll move into our new business now. We do have a resolution here that I will read. Resolution R dash zero three three dash twenty-two. A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County to appoint a member to the Walker County Animal Control Board, whereas OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-three A two provides that the Animal Control Board is an authority charged with exercising those powers set forth on OCGA four dash eight dash twenty-three as determined by the county governing authority. Whereas Section six dash one oh nine A of the Code of Walker County delegates the authority to appoint members and alternates to the Walker County Animal Control Board, to the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners of Walker County Board, approve, approval of the board, and whereas a vacancy exists on the Animal Control Board due to the retirement of Dr. Ben Benson. And whereas Chairman Whitfield submits the following appointment to serve as the member of the Animal Control Board, Dr. Kincaid, excuse me, Dr. Kincaid Summer for a term ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. Whereas Dr. Kincaid is duly qualified to serve as a member of the Animal Control Board and has expressed the willingness to serve the people of Walker County in such capacity, therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Walker County, Georgia, and appoint of Dr. Kincaid is approved, resolved, and adopted the twenty-fifth day of August, two thousand twenty-two. Dr. Benson, as it states here, has retired. He had the veterinarian practice over in Villa now. Dr. Kincaid is in his office as well. He's been working there with him for several years. Commissioner Hart's had a long working relationship with him. I think he's helped you with a lot of your farm animals and things.
Yes, he has.
He's a very good young man. Was able to meet him. University of Georgia graduate from vet school at the University of Georgia. Just an outstanding young man, and being into the same practice, and our Board of Animal Control has to have a vet on that board. So that's what has prompted this appointment to fill the vacancy term of Dr. Benson, since he had to retire his practice. We have to have a vet on this board. And so Commissioner Hart spelt very highly of Dr. Kincaid, and I went over and met him and agreed with him. And so I'd like to make the official motion to this board that we adopt this resolution so Dr. Kincaid can be our veterinarian on our Animal Control Board. So I do make that motion at this time, and do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Hart. Any further discussion of the board? All right, hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this appointment is approved. Okay, we do have a purchase order here for capital equipment in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and seven cents for a compressor system. So this is for our fire department. We'll ask Mr. Hodge to come up at this time and give us an overview on this purchase request.
Thank you. The Walker County Fire Rescue has two air systems. One is in a mobile unit. We've been waiting, it's a smaller unit. We take it on the fires, refill the cylinders. We've been waiting on a motor replacement for over ten months on it. Just can't find, they can't find one. So there's, there's an issue there. This is a primary unit that we're requesting. The current one we have is thirty-one years old, and it came from RICO. They donated it some time ago to the organization, and it's, it's, it's been pretty, pretty good since I've been here, but it would keep, we keep having issues with it, it keeps going down, parts are getting expensive, hard to find. It's just, it's an older unit. So this is, we have, we, we have to have this. It's a, another way we can refill cylinders. We are going with one that has auxiliary outlets on it now, so in the event the motor is out on our, the way this works, it's compressor, it fills larger cylinders that cascade, and we can pressurize the smaller ones. So we, at least with auxiliary output from a main system like this, will be able to fill the mobile unit cylinders and take it on the fire to fill at least fifteen, twenty bottles on the fire, and then go refill the system. When we get the motor compressor working, it'll do it on its own, but this is a primary stationary unit that will be in the organization, and we're, we're looking to actually purchase another one in a, in a year or two.
Okay, so for clarification, everyone also watching at home, this, when I, we say the term compressor, this is to compress oxygen?
Taking, taking ambient air, it filters it, puts it in a, pressurizes it into a cylinder.
And this goes into this?
We wear on our air packs when we fight fire with.
So this is for our firemen, for their air packs when they go into smoke field rooms?
What allow them to save those?
That's exactly right.
Yeah. And so this request is to replace the unit that's thirty-one years old, and...
And donated.
And donated.
We're glad to know.
And so this is coming out of your capital budget from the fire department, out of your general fund, or special revenue fund budget. So we are paying for this, we're not financing this, so this is in the amount of thirty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars and seven cents. Is there any questions of the board to Chief Hodge?
I got a question. So where will this be located? Will it be stationary or will it be mobile or?
It will be stationary. It's going to go to the Chicken Mager Station. It's where we do, we have members on our team that are air pack technicians.
Okay.
So they do, they're, they're constantly, we have, again, we have two hundred and fifty plus self-contained breathing apparatus that have to be tested. They have to do it on a, on a, can't do it all at once, obviously, there's a lot of air packs along with, while they're working, so they have to schedule it out throughout the year. So they're, they're consistently on shift, working on those units, so they have to, they need the air.
So it's located in one location, is it?
Currently, the one that we have now is at the training center.
Okay.
And we're going to try to keep it, keep it running as long as we can, but it's not looking, it hasn't been promising the last couple of years with it.
So it's a, it's a compression, it's hardwired into an electrical system?
Yes, sir. It'll be a single-phase unit compressor that takes that ambient air outside, filters it, compresses it.
So it's not, it's not really mobile, it stays there?
No, sir. It, no, it is, it is absolutely bolted to the floor.
It's hardwired in there, and they bring the bottles there to get them filled?
Yes, and they have auxiliary hose that, that we could fill that truck with.
Okay.
On this one. We don't have that capability now with the current one.
All right. Any other questions?
I have one. Chief, the portable cylinder on the fireman's pack, how long does that, how much O-TO does it have in?
Well, we call them thirty and forty-five, we have two different, two different sizes. Thirty minutes, forty-five minutes, what we layman's terms can call it. You might be able to make a thirty-minute last thirty-five minutes, I may be able to make it last twelve.
Yes.
So it depends on, it depends on the individual, but, but typically, we're get, we get, on the thirty-minute, we'll get twenty, twenty-five minutes out of it, on the forty-five, around thirty-five to forty. It just depends on how, if we go, I mean, we do drills where we go, we lay in a corner, you know, marrying a collapse, and we had to, you know, try to save as much air as possible. We've had people have the forty-five cylinder last hour and a half. I mean, you can, you can stretch it.
That's right.
And I take it there's probably a sensor that lets the fireman know?
That's correct. It gets certain, certain pound, some PSI left in the bottle, it'll, you know, alarm.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Two questions, anything else? Okay, thank you, Chief Hodge, for presenting this. Do we have a motion to approve this purchase order from the fire department's special revenue budget?
Motion to approve.
Oh, we have a motion by Commissioner Stoltz. And we have a second by Commissioner Blakemore. Any further discussion of the board?
Yes, sir.
Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, this purchase order is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, getting toward the end of our agenda here, at this time, we do have for our commissioner comments, and so we'll start out with Commissioner Bookman.
Just appreciate everybody coming out and all your hard work, dedication to Walker County and the citizens, their employees, and if I can help you call it to the stream, I thank you.
Mr. Askew?
Yes, I, I think tonight's a pretty good example of what kind of teamwork we do have across the board, and, and even with our, our fire in Rossville and the road department stepping in and doing some work. And I, I obviously want to piggyback off of Robert, that we do have a great team, and it does take financing to keep the team rolling, and so we're trying to give you what you need, and we appreciate the hard work that y'all give us. We also appreciate the participation from the public here again coming in, whether you support what we're doing or whether you're in disagreement with it, helps us better to govern and learn and listen, so thank you for your participation.
Very good. Commissioner Hart?
Yeah, I got something I want to point out. We voted on this some months ago, and the grant finally came through, and I think Joe's going to get it out on, on our website and stuff. But we partnered with Limestone Valley RC&amp;D about six, eight months ago. We put in fifteen thousand dollars on a program that was going to improve water quality on Chattanooga and Dry Creek, which that's up in your area, right, Mark?
Yeah.
Mostly, I think mostly in your district, maybe Rockers too.
Well, got both of them.
Yeah. The total plan, the total cost of the plan was thirty-five thousand dollars. And as of last week, we were notified that our application for funding was approved, and we're working to finalize details on a hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred dollar grant. So what this grant's going to do is people are having trouble with their septic tanks, it's going to help them with that, and it's also going to help us with some agricultural best management practices throughout, in that area. And then we're also maybe applying for another on the south end of the county. I thought we got the information on that last week, so just wanted to point that out, that, that's, that's a small amount invested for a large return there, so appreciate Stephen Benetoke, if you don't know him, he's a, he's a director of Limestone Valley, and he, he works good with all counties in this area.
Mr. Stoltz?
Yes, sir. So I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I want to mention that there will be a homecoming celebration and service this Sunday from ten-thirty until twelve at the New Harvest Baptist Church. That is across the street from Roper. I would like to invite anyone in the community to come. It'll be a wonderful message. My, my wife is doing part of the music, so I would invite anyone to please come and attend. I would also like to thank our county employees for the hard work that they do. Appreciate everyone. We are truly blessed to have one of the best fire, rescue, and nine-one-one services in this state. Tonight's ceremony showed the dedication and the sacrifices that these folks do, and when we go to bed at night, they're out working and risking their lives, all of our departments, many of them, road department, sheriff's department, fire department, nine-one-one, and they do a wonderful job. So if you see these folks out in the community in uniform, thank them for the service that they do, because they do a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Very good. Just to piggyback off of what Commissioner Hart said about this grant, this is something that's been a long time in the work, and as you indicated, Stephen has done a phenomenal job, because there was a lot of research that had to be done in these creeks, taking water samples and evaluating and testing to even apply for that grant. So that's been going on for, for a couple of years. There was a couple of public hearings that he had, and so we hope this is the first of many to give funding to help make quality improvements to our creeks. And as Commissioner Hart mentioned, this is one of those things where part of this program is to work with our local citizens to be able to assist local citizens with grants if they have a failing septic system. And so we can help in that shared cost for families that have failing septic systems that are in the areas of these creeks, and also best management practices for farmers, you know, if they have a need to, for fencing and all, to keep their livestock out of the creeks and things, to keep the, the creeks in good shape. And so there's a lot of things that can be done with this grant funding, it's federal funding, and we're already working on some other creeks in Walker County, so we can try to cover more of our county with this. And so this is just another team effort of working together, working with some other agencies to pull this grant funding in, and hopefully this will be something, if it's well utilized, that will be a continuation that we can apply for on a, on an annual basis. Also, our, just to make sure everyone is aware, because our schedule is a little bit different in the month of September, because we wanted to get our millage rate and all done as fast as possible, so the tax commissioner can get the tax bills out. So we have a public hearing on the millage rate next Thursday, September the first, two thousand twenty-two, at six-thirty back here in this room at the Annex Three. And then we will have a special called meeting Thursday, that same night, September the first, at seven o'clock preceding the public hearing. So our regular scheduled second Thursday of September, we will not have a meeting that Thursday. We've just moved that meeting up to September first. And then we will be back on schedule for a regular meeting, starting back on Thursday, September the twenty-second. We'll get us back on our regular schedule at seven PM. And at that meeting as well, we will actually take action to adopt the budget at the September twenty-second meeting. So the September first meeting will be to the, adopt the millage rate, or to set and adopt that, and then the, the twenty-second will be to finalize and adopt the budgets for FY twenty-three, which for our county starts October the first. So we'll get that in a few days before our deadline. So at this time, do we have any need for an executive session?
Mr. Chair, I would like to interject one thing I did forget.
Okay, sure.
In my commission of comments, you asked David Brown to come up and give us an update on safety committee.
Okay, yeah, great. Forgot. Glad you remembered that.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, yeah. David Brown is our coordinating member of our safety team, and so he's, we've had some funds we've been using to update our safety equipment for our staff members, so we'll let him speak a few minutes.
If you want to pass that around? This will be a quick update. On the thermal imagers for the Walker County Sheriff's Department, I talked to the gentleman at the company. They have nine of the PTM one sixty-sixes, which will be that, we ordered ten, they have nine in stock, they're waiting on a component to finish the tenth one, to ship them. And the two PTM four sixty-sixes, which are the most efficient, that's the same component they're waiting on. So they're going to wait till they get them all, ship them at one time, instead of having several shipments at once. So they're going to keep us updated, should be in September. If you look in your packet, we've ordered two stand-up mobile podiums. The first one, it shows what it looks like, and on the next two pages, it shows you why we ordered them. This is one in one of our offices where they have people come to the door to talk. They've actually got their computer on the desk on two paper cartons. That's how they work. And the other one, it's on a little makeshift table next to the door, so they ask for those. And then we ordered four of the DEFI standing desk converters. It's actually like a flex spot. It's a desk that raises up with one hand, it makes it where you can stand up and work to get out of sitting all day. They say that's very strenuous. Also, with the way the computers sit, it puts pressure on your neck and your back. That we ordered those, they're here. Of course, there is the yak track that Commissioner Stoltz suggested that we get for the road department and the shop when they're out cutting trees in the bad weather. They're not spikes, they've got coils on them, they're good for traction. And then you can see we have, we've ordered ten of the caution wet floor signs. We found some departments that don't have any. And we have the, the actual, the citizens coming in, and we have to have wet floor signs. Those are here. We've ordered five large metal first aid cabinets. Some of the elected officials said they don't have any kind of first aid kits in their office at all. Courthouse, they come to probate, they borrow theirs, we're putting some in there. And if you'll notice, you go into our buildings, we noticed we've got the anti-slip mats at the doors. Most of ours are curled. are curled, and they're a trip hazard. We've had several at the tax commissioner's office where we've actually called ambulance where people fell, so we're replacing all of those on that. The raincoats, I talked to the young lady at the supply place and what she's gonna do, she's gonna order me everything from a medium up to a 4X, where we can go around and let the departments fit theirselves, instead of asking her to stay in her office for two days for people to come, same way with the vest. The safety polarized glasses for the road department and shop, they will be ordered next week, I think. Becky, didn't we get that account set up?
Couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, we had to set up an account with J.J. Keller. The, also, you see the Weather Guard shelf unit, that was a request from the corner, their van does not have a divider between the driving compartment and the transport. So I actually, I consulted Commissioner Stoltz about that, he was in agreement with that, they do need a barrier in there because of possible exposure, you don't know what you're bringing in, and then the last one, this will be for the fire department, talked to Blake Hodge about this, he's asking for three Life Pack 1000 graphic display AEDs, that is what they've got on some of their trucks now, that's what, they can have the patient hooked up on a AED and everything, and all they do is unplug it, Memorial comes in, plugs it into their machine, Memorial gives us another set of pads, we don't have to purchase any more pads after the first pad, and he's asked for three for this.
Good, a lot of this stuff's coming in, glad supply chain's getting better.
Were you also gonna give us a quick update on Lisko Road?
Yeah, while we're talking about that.
Thank you.
Remember the Lisko Road down, Ms. Sharon? She did come in, she did, her contractor's purchased all of her permits, it shows on there what she paid for it, she got temporary power on 616, all she got was temporary power, and I went down about two weeks ago, and I met with her daughter down there, and the carpenter has come in and done a little bit of work in the floor, but her daughter did show me that, she said he was through, but we won't approve it because there's some in the bathroom and in the living room, there's holes big enough for your arm to go through. So as of right now, that's all Ms. Sharon has got done, is temporary power, they say they're not living in it, which I'm not gonna question, I'd rather than be in the mobile home than in the camper, as far as space, but this is just a two-month update, that really, it's not going very far.
All right, at this time, do we have a need for an executive session? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Commissioner Hart, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Askew, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned at 8:02 PM, thank all of y'all for coming out tonight.
That's a record.